I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Yes. I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 3.1, the role, Ms. Serza, would you take the role?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
And item 3.2, approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly's gonna...
Mr. Kelly's gonna struggle his way through this. Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented with the exception of 6.02 revised policy, J N Appendix A, student fee schedule for school year 2019-20, remove that and we'll add that to the August 6th agenda.
Item what?
6.06.
6.0...
Yeah. That's my fault.
Oh, item 6.06, revised policy, J N Appendix A, student fee schedule, I don't know what you have there.
Which one? 6.06? No, 6.06, so we move to August 6?
6.06, not that, I don't know what you got.
Different agenda.
It's revised policy, J N, right? It's policy, J N, that's where we're moving?
Right, it's the student fee schedule.
So Julie and I both have different agendas.
The one based on our meeting way back when, maybe it's...
Yes.
The one on the board docs.
So it's 6.6, we're moving 6.6 to the August 6th meeting.
That was dainty.
Is there a second? Second.
Any discussion?
The reason why we're moving that is Mrs. DePaola is not here, so she was otherwise detained tonight.
And so it'll be for discussion and then adoption in the second meeting in August?
Right, it'll be on the proposed agenda for August 6th. Are no discussion, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Okay, moving to item 4.1, announcements, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two brief announcements to share with you this evening. First, I want you to know that summer school is successfully underway. For students in grades K through 8, summer school is designed to offer continued support and reduced summer learning slides. Students take part in project-based learning to strengthen English, language arts, and math skills. For students in grades 9 through 12, summer school is an opportunity for SOL remediation or to retake a class for credit recovery. Other students may elect to take an entirely new course during summer school. For example, students may choose to take a health PE course in the summer, which opens up a place in their schedule for another elective during the traditional school year. We often have a few students who complete their K-12 education with us during summer school each year. We celebrate these young men and women with a formal graduation ceremony in August. Board members, you will receive an invitation to this event very soon. And finally, tonight, I'd like to share some news from the WJCC Schools Foundation. Last week, the foundation named Dr. Kathleen Mullins the organization's new president. She succeeds Clarence Wilson, who held the role since the education foundation began in 2015. In addition to leading WJC Schools Foundation, Dr. Mullins is a member of the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra Board. Before retiring to Williamsburg in 2018, she served four decades as president and CEO of historic estates and museums throughout the country, including Montpelier in Orange, Virginia. In addition, Dr. Mullins has been a tireless civic leader, serving on community, state, and national boards and councils of multiple cultural and preservation organizations. As we welcome Dr. Mullins, I would also like to say a big thank you to the longtime foundation president, Clarence Wilson. He has truly been the heart and soul of the foundation since it began. I know I speak for the school board as well as myself when I say he is a valued partner in education and member of our community. We are grateful for his support and the work he's done to enrich the learning opportunities available for our students. So tonight, I offer my thanks to Mr. Wilson and a sincere welcome to Dr. Mullins. We look forward to collaborating with the foundation in the months and years to come. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all of the announcements this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there additional updates from board members? Okay, moving on to citizens' comments, 5.1, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board, those citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked to not engage in applauding verbal outbursts or any type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, my instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Hummel?
Susan Hildum.
Members of the school board and Superintendent Heron, I'm Susan Hildum, Chair of the York James City Williamsburg NAACP Education Committee, and I'm here to comment on several items. First, our committee would like to know how many spaces are available in the career and technical education program. I have some contact information if someone can get that response to me. And secondly, it has come to our attention that high school students have not been notified of scholarships designed for minority students. Instead, students have to ask for them, and this is a disservice to those who don't know to ask. Thirdly, the GPA, grade point average requirement for high school athletes is reportedly 1.25, the equivalent of a D-, however, schools that these students would progress to at the college level mainly require at least a 2.0 grade point average. Our committee is concerned that the district is expecting so little of the athletes, and it seems to show minimal investment in their academic success. Lastly, it has also come to our attention that all the administrators at Lafayette High School this year are white. Well, you do a commendable job to racially balance the administrations of many of the district's schools. It's surprising that you would place an all-white administrative team at the high school with the highest percentage of minority students. This will be noted by students and teachers alike, and can be taken as a slight or a sign of indifference. Unfortunately, it is a fact of human nature that those who are disrespected are the first people to make note of it. I would like to think this is not a message that you want to convey to a significant percentage of your student body and teaching staff.
Thanks. Thank you.
Jay Everson?
Jay Everson, 103 Branscombe Boulevard in the county. Shortly, if not already, the central office is going to receive the preliminary numbers on the Future Think, and I'm hopeful that this year, we will finally indicate that Colonial Heritage, Jamestown Settlement, and other age-restricted communities have a zero growth in population. That's the first point. Second point, which is the first two pages I gave you, the Future Think is indicating household size at 2.9. The US Census, depending on how you want to look at it, is either a 2.5 or 2.2. This is a significant difference, because when you take household size, the number of households, and start projecting in the future with building permits, you're going to have an awful lot more people showing up, primarily kids, that aren't going to be there. It seems to me that the Future Think household size should be consistent, at least with the US Census, through 2018, which I provided you here. They're using their estimates for 2018 at 2.89. Depending how you want to read this, it's either 2.23 or 2.53. That is huge, because that's a whole bunch of kids that you're going to be projecting that aren't going to be here, particularly when you consider above it the age distribution of people. The last thing, at your joint meeting with the governing bodies, there was a lot of discussion about Bright Beginnings, and I gather there was some discussion at your last meeting on this issue also. And the mayor had even asked about some of the issues regarding the number of kids with disabilities. And we're left with the impression that a lot of the Bright Beginnings was being driven by special needs children, IEPs. Well, what's fascinating to me, which is the third page I gave you, is the reporting to the state indicates that there's 186 IEP, special needs children, 2 to 4, 20 to 21. Now, assuming that they're all 2 to 4, that represents half of the Bright Beginnings population. And since you're looking for $38 million for another elementary school, which is being driven by the increased enrollment in Bright Beginnings, it seems to me that we ought to be clear about how you get into this. I get the IEP. I get it. My own grandson, though he didn't go to Bright Beginnings, had an IEP at the age of three. They fixed his speech by the time he was eight, it was great. I have no objections to this. However, in a program that's going up to 360-plus kids, depending on how the reporting goes to the Commonwealth, because the numbers are varied on the reporting, it seems to me that we need to take a look at how you get into this program. I timed it perfectly.
You did.
I am done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 6.1, proposed agenda items, the non-resident tuition rates for 2019-2020 school year. Dr. Heron. Mrs. Ombi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ewing's here to present the annual issue, we present the tuition rates for non-resident students, and Ms. Ewing's going to present this agenda item this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Annually, we bring the non-resident tuition rate for the upcoming school year to you for approval. The tuition rates are based on the adopted fiscal year 20 budget, and the calculation is based on the same methodology as used in prior years. The recommended tuition rate for regular education is $10,539, which is an increase of $257, or 2.5% over fiscal year 19. The special education tuition rate is recommended to be $18,434, which is a decrease of $45, or .24% under fiscal year 19. This decrease can be attributed to our special education December 1 child count increasing by approximately 9% from 1,0764 to 1,0918, but our budget only increased by approximately 5% from $14.6 million to $15.1 million. At this time, we are not anticipating any tuition students for the upcoming school year, as the one student from last year has graduated. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for Ms. Ewing?
So we had one student that paid the tuition last year.
Was it a special ed student or a regular?
No, regular education.
Historically, how many?
Had one for the past four years.
Graduated.
He graduated, yes.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Okay, item 6.2, 2019-2020 CNS food and consumables purchase.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another annual information piece we bring to the board, and Ms. Haley is here to present the information this evening.
Good evening. Annually, child nutrition services purchases food and consumables from a variety of different vendors through cooperative agreements, and this enables us to take advantage of the bulk buying discounts that we receive in participating in these cooperative agreements. These amounts are less than the board approval threshold for a single year, but because of the extensions on them, they would go over the $100,000. So we're presenting these particular vendors to receive your approval to move forward.
Do we have questions for Mrs. Haley? Dr. Beers?
I'm just curious, do these vendors have to, I don't know, submit proposals? Do we get, are there other vendors who also submit, and these are the ones you've selected?
Yes, these are through cooperative agreements, which are with other counties as well, and the whole purchasing process is followed with, you know, the bid goes out, different vendors submit their proposals, and then the selection process takes place, just as if it would if we did it ourselves.
Okay, and one of the, obviously, you know, the quality of the food is going to be good, but the other reason is to save, is to get the biggest bang for your buck, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook?
So just so I, just so I understand, so if the board approves this at its next meeting, then we won't see you again on this for another three years, is that correct?
On these particular vendors, that's true. I may come back with other vendors, but you would not see me again on these particular ones.
So this provides an efficiency for you to not have to come back to the board?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then are these products that you're going to be purchasing over the next three to four years with these vendors, is it for meals or à la carte, or could you give me a sense?
It's for all of the above. The products that we purchase, some of them are for meals, and then they're also used for à la carte.
So are they, okay.
Any additional questions? Okay, moving on to item 6.3.
Haley's going to present the next item, too, and it's an annual price increase that's brought to the board.
The Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2018 stipulated that only the school food service authority or agencies that had a negative balance had to follow the paid lunch equity tool, which I think we've discussed here in prior years. We do not have a negative balance, but the Department of Education does require that we complete this tool every year at any rate. Because we don't have to follow the tool, we are recommending that the lunch prices and breakfast prices increase five cents for the coming 19-20 school year. The lunch prices for elementary would be $2.75, $2.85 for middle, and then there's a scale for the high school between $3 and $3.75. Then breakfast prices would also go up a nickel, $1.40 for elementary, $1.50 for middle, and $1.60 for the high school. If we had used the paid equity tool, we would have to go up 10 cents.
Other questions for Ms. Haley? Ms. Cook?
Roughly, what, how much, what percentage of your revenue comes from meals? Comes from the lunch price and the breakfast price? Is it, is it the majority, and then the minority is à la carte, or do you, if you don't know that?
I'd have to get back to you with an exact percentage, but it is, the majority is from meals. There's a little bit of a difference between that and à la carte.
Yeah, I don't need an answer, but the majority does come from meals. Okay, thank you.
Probably because the elementaries in the middle mostly do meals, and so the high schools will do the à la carte.
Is that, is...
That is correct. We do sell a small amount of à la carte in the elementaries, but it's the majority at the high schools.
Are there additional questions or comments? I do have one. I believe we increased it a nickel last year as well? No?
No, we, I don't believe we did.
My question was, like, kind of what's, is the trend historically? Like, how often do we increase?
We try not to go up unless we feel that we need to. This year, with the labor going up 3.5%, and then with additional food costs, which just happens naturally because of the market, we felt like we needed to increase it a little bit. The other reason is that this paid lunch equity tool regulation has changed three or four times in the last five years, so if they change it again, we don't want to get too far behind what we should be at in order to meet the tool.
So when was the last time we increased?
I believe it was the year before last.
I guess that, and that was a nickel then?
That is correct.
Okay.
And just as a matter of clarification for the public, you have, your budget has to be self-sustaining, is that correct?
Correct, yes, our budget is self-sustaining.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Haley. Moving on to item 6.4, CDR lease revisions. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On May 21, 2019, the school board approved a lease agreement between Child Development Resources and Williamsburg James City County School Board for a term beginning September 1, 2019, and ending in August 31, 2020. Basically, the lease is back with you tonight because of Child Development Resources. Staff have requested some additional changes to the lease. Both sides did have an opportunity to review the lease, but they did find some other minor details that they wish to make amendments to, and so I want to take you through those very quickly tonight for you and the public, so that you'll know what those changes are. If you have the lease in front view in board docs, and basically, the only change on page one is a new date, today's date, for voting for the new lease. On page two, there are no changes. On page three, under...
Oh, I think there is.
There are changes on page two.
Yeah.
Under, yes, I'm sorry. Page two, number four, states the Learning Laboratory Child Care Center is licensed for up to 32 children. This number should be 36, and that's been changed in the lease. In page three, number, under number two, the lease states the parents of children must meet residency requirements or be employed, an employee of CDR or the board to have the services. The second part of that has been taken out, because CDR-employed children or board member's children are not enrolled unless they qualify under the same criteria as any other family. On page three, part B, it gives the hours of operation as 7:30 to 5:00. That was an error, it's actually 7 o'clock to 5, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Page four, paragraph D, states the CDR employees undergo drug screening. As a general practice, CDR employees are not drug screened, so that has been taken out. Page four, under School Division Services, the lease states that the school division will provide meals to the center. This was an arrangement under the original lease over eight years ago, eight years ago, and that entire paragraph has been removed or revised as follows. Basically, meal service will be provided to children enrolled in the lab center by CDR staff. Meals will meet USDA guidelines, and CDR will bill the USDA for reimbursement directly. There are no changes on all of the following pages, except page 10, where the agreement is signed by the executive director, not the chairman of CDR's board. Those are the requested changes by CDR for your consideration this evening.
Are there any questions of Dr. Heron? And just to point out, this will also, this is also on our agenda tonight to vote on as an action item. If you have questions?
I don't have any questions about the, or issues with the changes they've made. I have my same overall objection, so I'll still vote the same way I did last time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Just, this is just on the meal services, it's, under meals will meet USDA guidelines, period, and then it says and CDR will bill USDA. I just think we need to strike the period. So where's I gonna do that?
Unless there are further comments or questions, we'll vote on this in just a little bit. Moving on to the next action, opposed item, 6.5, authorization of signatures and absence of the superintendent. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm asking you to consider this evening authorizing Ms. Renee Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, and Dr. Corey Murphy, Chief of Staff, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence of the superintendent through August 15, 2020.
Any comments? Ms. Young?
I think there's a change. It's, it says 2019 on my copy that I have in front of me.
Oh, on the design name?
2020.
Through August 15, 2019. Yeah. We'll fix that.
That just shows when it currently is approved for, and down below, you put extended through, and we'll fill in the date.
We'll fill in the date.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Additional comments? Moving on to item 6.6, Revised Policy J and Appendix A Student Fee Schedule for School Year 2019, 2020.
Has been moved to August.
Hello.
Gosh.
I had it all crossed out there. Okay. Information. Item 7.1, Information on Capital Improvement Plan Projects. That's always exciting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Felsone's here this evening to give us a brief update on capital improvement plan projects that have been completed during the last year and to provide some visuals for the board this evening. Thank you, Mr. Felsone, for being here.
I'd like to thank you for having me back with this. So, yeah, I'm Jim Felsone.
They let me come back every time, too.
Each year, the CIP committee meets to review projects that people would like to have included in the, in the overall school budget. And subsequently, the superintendent and staff will get together and develop and present to the school board a proposed CIP plan for your review and for your approval. After it's adopted and our funding partners agree to it, the operations team from the school division is tasked with making sure that all those projects get done or are completed. So, my presentation this evening is to show you what we've completed in the past year, since you've had your last update, and show you what's coming up a little bit, too. Any questions before we start?
Can we get this in board docs at some point?
Presentation copies.
No, just in board docs.
Oh, yes, I'll add it. I'll add it tomorrow morning.
So, I'm going to try this now.
We're all going to lean back.
I know, seriously. Chris, what have I done wrong?
I thought we'd done some training.
Oh, thank goodness.
Pressing forward did not work. I loved it.
See what it works.
There we go. So, these are the projects that we've completed in the past year. They are all from fiscal year 18, so we would have completed them through 18 and 19, except for one, is the Stone House Bus Canopy, which was on in the CIP for fiscal year 17. That one, you may recall, had some delays associated to it because we had to get a variance from VDOT in order to build the canopy so close to the, to the pavement, and also, we had to add some ADA features to the sidewalk. Any questions on this? We're going to go through them. First one is Clara Byrd Baker Elementary School. We had a project scheduled to do some major masonry renovations. That building is all entirely cinder block. It's a textured cinder block, just like the cinder blocks in this room, and joined with mortar, which is very porous. And so, we had a budget that was prepared by RMM Architects, so $1.3 million. That was originally meant to include replacing some soffits. You see some soffits up underneath the ledges there, and to replace the lintels, which are the metal strips that hold all the, all the cinder block up, keep it from falling, also to patch some of the, to patch cracks, and actually to re, it's called tuck point, which is really just kind of re-tucking all of those joints in the brick. It's very time-consuming, and that's why the budget was so high. When we walked the vendors through this particular project during the bidding process, vendors suggested, hey, this whole building doesn't have to be tuck pointed. We can just do selected areas. And so, we ended up just getting a unit price from each of the vendors to do selected tuck point, and that's exactly what happened. So, we dropped that price down quite a bit. With some of the additional money that had been budgeted, then we were able to go back and replace all the LED light fixtures with a change order. That project. Any questions?
LEDs?
They really do. Yeah, quite a lot, quite a lot.
So, the LEDs, are they, are they embedded in that $300,000 price, or are they?
They're embedded in the $300,000.
So, we netted them just under $1 million?
That's correct.
In the fund balance? Okay.
The next two projects, I just condensed them onto one slide here, is in line with the efforts that we've undertaken to really make our entranceways more secure. DJ Monagu and Norg Elementary Schools, we had some funding last year to, to secure the entranceways, the vestibules. Make sure that when people get buzzed into the school, they can't just walk around the school at large. They have to go through the office. It's not a fail-safe method, but it's just another level of protection for our kids and for our staff. These were designed by Guernsey Tingle Architects, and the original budgets for them, I think, included some upgrades, and we decided it would be better if we just did the bare minimum than we needed to do. For example, you can see on Norg's, the door on the right, the wall doesn't go all the way through the ceiling. And by, by not taking that wall all the way to the ceiling, we've got fewer structural constraints. We have, we don't have to move sprinkler, fireheads, things like that. So, that's what, that's why we see a price differential between the budgets and the actual expenditures.
I really appreciate that thought process.
Yeah, no kidding.
No, I really do. Well, because it's, it's hard to go through all of that, and so much easier to say, yeah, just do whatever. So, I appreciate that.
Well, good.
You're always thinking of ways to reduce our expenditures.
Well, I mean, there's never enough money, is there?
Right.
You know? So, it's true. Chris?
Ms. Young?
So, the DJ, the entranceway on DJ Monagu doesn't go all the way to the ceiling? Is that what I understand?
In Norg's, the one on Norg's. So, you see that white strip above it. That's actually the ceiling beyond it.
There's a wall there. It's not...
I see that, but I mean, is that, if you have an extremely athletic person, could they get through there?
No, probably not. It's not even that, it's not, it's a place for me like this. It's just enough to keep airflow and enable us to not have to move sprinklers around a whole lot. This project was originally proposed in the Facility Conditioning Index by, looking for Gould.
Eastland Gould.
Thank you. And so, it was meant to replace some Asian electrical equipment that's, we just can't get parts for anymore. It's by a manufacturer called Federal Pacific, and so, the budget was developed by the FCI, in the FCI, rather. When we actually bid it, we had a variable, very favorable bidding climate. We had four, I think, four vendors that came and bid on that. This, the one that was successful was Luxter at 52,000. We did have one over $100,000, but this work is done, and they did, they did a good job.
That was the same scope as 180,000?
It was. This one, this project here is replacing the walk-in cooler and freezer at Tulano. We've put them on a cycle for replacement because, like everything else in the school division, it's pretty much on a cycle. So, this one was budgeted in the same Facility Conditioning Index, but when we actually bid it out, Chris Food Service came in. I think it was actually less than 62,000, but we put a little extra money in there for , for on concrete pads and using other vendors to do some of that work. War Hill Science Lab. Okay, this one, the budget was originally $300,000. We had a CIP amount for making some classroom space changes to War Hill High School. That included some maker space. I think that at the time, this is before my time, but at the time, the thinking was that we would also look for getting some money for the other high schools to do similar, similar spaces. Since then, because of the, our recent discussions about student populations, the focus has been more on developing school expansions, which would include some of these spaces, and so, that $300,000 wasn't really needed to do some of the original planned work. War Hill did need some modifications to their science lab, though, so we did use some of that money for that purpose. You can see in the before picture, the lab tables at the back of the classroom, well, it's kind of hard to tell in that picture, but the, the lab tables were not ADA compliant with the distance from the wall on the side there. So, we moved those around. We re-tiled the floors, got a new marker board. $23,000 seems like a lot of money for that, but when we moved those lab tables, we also have to move all the drains and all the water and all the natural gas and electricity that goes with them, too. So, that's what we, we did there.
But that was for ADA compliance? And what, what didn't you do that was originally in?
Basically, if you think back a couple of years, when we were going through all of the, using all the innovation grants, at that point, we put $300,000. We were attaching to each high school to create maker space in every high school. We didn't follow through with that because now we're looking at expanding all three high schools, and part of the expansion actually includes the incorporation of the maker space. So, this was the original 300,000 that was in the CIP for that purpose originally.
It's been folded into the expansion.
Correct.
Okay. Stone House Bus Canopy, this is one I mentioned before. This is actually from fiscal year 17. We did get it done last summer, though. Originally, the budget for it was $236,000. It was developed by Mosley Architects. It turns out that this, this canopy is a very big canopy. It was originally designed to go the entire length of the bus loop and also connect the bus loop with the front door. You can see in the picture on the right there. So, it's a pretty long ways to go. When we, we only had one bidder on this, one vendor bid, David A. Nice, and he came in originally at $449,000. So, we value engineered this project. We value engineered it by changing a lot of the structure, the columns holding up the roof on the stick. The roof itself is a little lighter, so it doesn't need a stick of columns, and that also able, enabled us to do a lot of low ground, low-grade structural work that was a little bit less expensive, too. Plus, we cut out a section of the, of the canopy that wasn't really used, or wouldn't have been used very much. So, when we value engineered it, we got the project down to about 272,000, I think. And then, we had to add some ADA compliance components to the parking lot and sidewalk, which took us up to 345.
But wasn't just the bus can?
Well, really, it was just like handicap access to the parking lot on the other side. The curved side up there on the top right, we had to add some, like a ramp, and had to regrade some of the sidewalks so it wasn't steep, too steep. So, we did all that work.
The delay in the project also increased the price of the project in the original bidding.
Interesting how you got the buses in the same configuration, the before and after picture. The, pretty close. So, so the budget here was 236, and the actual was 345, so the under, the overruns came from the underruns in the previous project, the money to do this.
I just made a question for Ms. Yueng. I'm not sure where the money comes from.
Kind of figured that was going to happen.
I just built stuff.
So, you know, several of these projects are underrun, so, so that money goes, dot, dot, dot.
Yes, the overage for this project came from other projects that had available funding in them. Specifically, there's a project several years ago for Lafayette Practice Fields that had a small balance, and then there was a project for James Blair Sanitary Sewer that I don't believe was completed, and those funds were transferred to cover this.
So, did we work with the, the funding partners?
Yes.
So, their, their funding, their finance folks are aware that we're doing all this?
Yes.
These projects are not, well, actually, the Matthew Waley one is done. The Jamestown one is very nearly done. These are also fiscal year 18 CIP issues. The Matthew Waley vestibule already existed, and the cost of doing the work really was just in putting some electronic controls. Those are the doors there on the left, the white doors join the lobby, the main lobby with the, the entrance vestibule. There's a door on the left that goes into the office. So, we had to put some hardware on those white doors right there to make sure that they're, they're latched, and you can only get in with a card access. That was pretty simple. In Jamestown, if you can picture Jamestown, we flip-flopped the, the store, the, the school store with the security office, and then joined that, that new, I guess it's a reception area with the existing lobby to, so when people get buzzed in, they have to go into this new office now to get through.
When was that done?
We did the demolition on that over spring break, this past spring break, and then we've done the rest of it since school's been out.
Okay.
All the construction stuff you see there is all relative to HVAC stuff that we're also doing in Jamestown right now.
I was just like, God, I was at Jamestown just a little...
Yeah, they knew it was coming, too, as soon as they, as soon as the kids left.
I have a question. Could you say something about the windows and the Matthew Waley entrance? Glass, was it steel? The mullions there, what's the?
I believe it's all wood, frankly. I think it's all original to the building in 1931.
No, no, I mean, the, you've installed the white door.
No, those doors were already there. We just installed batches and controls on them so that they wouldn't just, you couldn't just open them up. You had to be buzzed in, or you have to use a key.
Okay.
So, before, they were just, they wouldn't even latch closed. You could just push them right open.
Right, right.
Or you could just pull them right open.
I know. I was about to say.
All right. So, okay, so...
The front door of a house.
Maybe your house.
So, that's really not a security. That's not a way to secure the building.
It's as secure as anything else.
If it's wood, if it's glass and it's wood, it can be broken.
It could be set of any glass, frankly.
So, I, so the real security is going to be in the front part?
It's in making sure that at least it's a deterrent that people can't just walk right into that building and bypass the office. So, at least this way, they have to go in the door to the left into the office.
And you can't knock those doors down, right?
I'm sure not. Yeah, no, you can't. They're, they're built in. So, what we've got coming up, and these are all projects that we are currently working on. So, in fact, some of them are already done, and I probably could have told you about them tonight, but if I did that, I'd make next year's presentation really boring. So, the Cooley Field improvements are almost done. They'll be done this, probably the next week and a half. And I could run through these and can tell you the scope. It's, you know, whatever you would like for me to do. I'd like to know what the scope of some of these is, just speak up. The auditorium seating is going to be done this week. I think most of these will be done this week. There's one that, that's noteworthy, and that's the Berkeley partial roof replacement. That was one that was in the fiscal year 18 work to have been designed. We were supposed to do the design work and actually do some of the construction work. We have coming up here in fiscal year 20 to design the HVAC replacements for that building. And so, the HVAC equipment on that, on Berkeley is just so old that we were afraid if we took it off the roof. It'd never work once we put it back. So, we decided to hold off on putting the roof design until we get the HVAC design going at the same time.
And we're on schedule to complete the Matthew Waley parking lot.
It is. It's on schedule. Have you been by there? It's a beautiful thing.
I get anxious, parents, I just want to...
Yeah, I bet. I bet. It's, it's, well, tell them not to go there this week. It's really bad.
Yeah, I heard the air conditioning wasn't working this week, so then I see the 120 ton chiller replacement. I understand why.
The Laurel HVAC replacement is coming along. We, last year, got the majority of that work done, so they've got an easy time of that this summer. The Jamestown HVAC replacement is, they've got a lot going on this summer. Basically, last summer, they just did a lot of the main infrastructure. They did the chillers, the boilers, a lot of the rooftop air handling units. This year, they've got every room pretty much ripped apart, and they're working up above all the ceilings. So, they've got a lot to do, and they're, they had an army of people working there. It's, it's also a thing of beauty. Any other questions on this slide?
Ms. Young?
Ms. Young?
On the playground equipment, what, when it says the division-wide playground equipment, what does that mean? Are we replacing all other playgrounds?
No, we, for the past several years, I guess, we've, we've gotten a budget for us to make necessary repairs to playgrounds, to parking lots. The parking lot budget, I think, was $320,000, and we go through every bit of it because we've got a lot of parking lots. Playground equipment need repairs, and we have to have them inspected now every year, too. So, we will get little dings, just like bleachers, we'll have to have them repaired, and we'll get told what to do. get told what to do.
One thing, I have to compliment the school system, as well as the boards, and the board today and the boards in the past, that what this really represents is really, real effort to maintain our facilities so that they are really the best that are available, and it really shows. And I know it takes a lot of work to keep them going, but having a plan where you basically go in and realize where you're gonna, you know, what you need to do in each building or each sitting is a lot of, it's a lot of forward-thinking, and it, and people need to appreciate that. We have outstanding facilities.
I'll tell you, I've been working in construction and engineering for 25 years, and I've been in thousands of schools. And I've only been here for a year and a half, so I'm not tooting my own horn. But I'm just saying that even, all the years my kids have come to these schools, they've been beautiful schools and very well-maintained and well taken care of. You can see it in how well their floors are taken care of. You can see it in how well our walls are taken care of. And so, I've been very impressed with the schools here, too. This is what's coming up. This is the budget that was just approved, the CIP was just approved in May. So, this is the, these are the projects that we'll be starting to design here coming up in the fall and working on into next summer. Some refurbishments coming up, and, yeah, go ahead.
Petoka, that is roof sections?
Rude, actually.
Yeah.
Very rude of you to say that.
I almost missed that one.
And the Warhol expansion, that includes the aux gym?
Yes.
The design?
Yes.
Aux gym.
Aux gym.
The aux.
There will be air.
Any questions or comments on this? I think that's actually it. Anything, any other questions or comments in general?
Ms. Cook?
So, you talked about the fiscal year 18 projects that were completed, and there was one fiscal year 17 project that was kind of hanging out in there that had been finished. Are there any projects in any fiscal years prior to that that have not been completed, that are still on the books?
Yes, there's one, Cooley Field. Cooley Field was fiscal year 2017, and that one was a delayed start because we couldn't get in there to work until James Blair Middle School had gotten to a certain stage.
Okay, so, but everything else is?
Everything else is.
And then, the balances for all those projects convey to our fund balance in our CIP?
Other one, I think, for Ms. Ewing.
Project balances that we can then work with our funding partners if we want to, transfers to other projects.
And just, and my observation, and I would appreciate your perspective on this, is that this year, we had a lot, most were under budget, but that is, we are not always that fortunate. Sometimes, there are some significantly over budget for reasons beyond our control. So, this was, is this an unusual year in that respect, in terms of being under budget for so many other projects?
I think it is unusual compared to prior years.
Additional comments?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fauzone. Okay, moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve personnel actions for this evening?
Madam Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 8.2, approve purchase request of laptops for high school student use.
Madam Chair, I approve the purchase request for laptops intended for high school student use to Lenovo in the amount of $786,000.
I second, I second her motion to approve.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 8.3, approve purchase request for IT Service Management System.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the purchase request for IT Service Management System to Virtusoft for $32,920 for the first year and $21,420 per year for years two through five.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Did I say aye already? I thought I said that already.
Item 8.4, approve purchase request for adaptive online mathematics program.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the purchase request for adaptive online mathematics program to iXL Learning for an initial two-year term with up to eight optional renewals in the amount of $35,000 per year.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 8.5, CDR lease revisions.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the revisions to the CDR leases presented this evening.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 8.6, revised policies from May VSBA 2019 updates. That was the batch.
Madam Chair, I move approval, revisions to policy BBFA Board Member Conflict of Interest and Member Ethics GA, personal policies goals, KB Request for Information, KF Distribution of Information Materials, and KG Community Use of School Facilities.
Second. Mr. Kelly. Any discussion?
It was well done, Mr. Kelly.
That's great. Ms. Sersa.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 8.7, revised policy DL payroll procedures.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve revisions to policy DL payroll procedures.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 8.8, approval of annual payroll schedule.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the annual payroll schedule as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
This is just a reminder, this is gonna be part of the annual workflow in response to the DL policy that we just adopted.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Done, Mrs. Cook.
Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 9.1, board member comments. Ms. Taylor?
Not a whole lot, but everyone keep enjoying your summer.
Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to let the public know that the Policy Committee in the near future will be revisiting the policy of this school division as it pertains to the Virginia High School League's policies. So, I just wanted to let everyone know that that's coming in the not-too-distant future. I also wanted to just check in with Dr. Heron, and if you could just remind us about Future Things accuracy in terms of population projections. They tend to be... I believe in the last several years, the accuracy of the projections has been within 1%. Thank you. I'd also just like to comment that in my work role, I tend to look at demographics of this region frequently, and although we are blessed to have a large older adult population older than 65, that does not represent a lack of a K-12 population. In fact, we're quite on par with the rest of the state and nation. So, just because we have an older population does not mean that we don't have children in our schools. In fact, we're experiencing growth, so I just wanted to comment on that. And I also wanted to comment that our need for a new elementary school is driven by that growth, by the K-12 population growth, as opposed to anything else.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. If I could just add with regard to the upcoming policy that you spoke to, so specifically, the Policy Committee within that will be looking at GPA for...
Sure, yeah, I didn't, yeah, that is, that will be part of it, yes.
That's part of that, so, recognizing.
Yep.
Ms. Young.
Yes, I just wanted to encourage everyone to have a restful summer, although, when I drove past this building yesterday, I did not see that in demonstration. The parking lot was cramful, so I went to encourage our educators and other people to please take a vacation and, and don't get burned out. We need you too badly.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Clarence Wilson for his, for his service, his dedication in really getting the ball rolling with the, our educational foundation and the subsequent grants that have been awarded to our teachers and ultimately helping our students. And welcome Dr. Kathleen Mullins in as the new president of the Educational Foundation. Comment was made tonight about the minimum GPA for athletes, and I actually, I agree that we should approach a 2.0 GPA, as many of our colleges and universities do expect a minimum of a 2.0, so I certainly support that. The other thing is, once again, the, all the folks in facilities from the top on down, the folks who work on the buses as well, and our nutritionists and the people that prepare the meals for our students, I can't, I can't say enough about the quality of their work. And I am, I know that we have a lot of people here in the community who really believe that our facilities are absolutely outstanding, top-rate, and it's one of the reasons they want to move to Williamsburg and/or James City County, because not just the quality of the education their students will receive, but also the quality of the, of the facilities that we have here. So, kudos once again. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, Mr. Kelly.
I'd like to just lend my concurrence to what Mrs. Cook said earlier about the growth projections. Where I worked down in Newport News, I've had several people that have mentioned that with six lanes coming to and from Williamsburg, Williamsburg is a place that they would consider relocating and moving their families to. So, I think that we are going to see some growth as a result of the improvements that are happening in I-64. And as to our age-restricted communities, today's family structure is different than it has been in the past, and we do send buses into those age-restricted communities to pick up kids. And then, I know a couple of years ago, we got, maybe it was a couple of years ago, we got a little bit heat because we had 25% growth projected in Heritage Landing, and when you have four kids there, 25% growth is one kid, so that goes to five. So, you know, there's, there is a math thing there. So, there are, there are reasons for those numbers. There are reasons that we do send buses into those age-restricted communities because there are kids there that are educated and raised by guardians and grandparents, so. I'd just like to, once again, lend my support to what Mrs. Cook said earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
I also wanted to thank Mr. Wilson, Mr. Clarence Wilson, for all of his dedication in the development of the Williamsburg School Systems Foundation, and I think for a while, we all thought he was gonna be director for life. So, anyway, I am very pleased that he now has a second retirement to look forward to, and I think he has set us up for success with his, with Dr. Mullins, I think is her name. And then, I also wanted to thank Mr. Fauzone for his presentation tonight, his attention to really trying to work on the, making our facilities the best they can with an eye to our budget, knowing that whatever money he is saving that makes sense gets allocated to future, future improvements. So, just wanted to thank that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I just would like to share, I'm excited to attend VSBA New Chair Orientation with Ms. Hummel, new chair and new vice chair that we weren't able to attend right after we were elected. So, excited to do that in Richmond on the 22nd, and then, we'll also on the 23rd, attend VSB Conference, and eager to hear our governor share his thoughts on education, and also be there to accept recognition for our ship farm-to-school days were recognized by VSBA. And so, we'll be there on behalf of the board to accept that recognition for the work that they've done, and so, wanted to give those accolades to them. And just wanted to share, summer is, is going by really quickly, and like, I know a lot of our students are already at band camp at JMU, already working on preparing for the upcoming halftime show across the division, and then, you know, our athletes and our band kids go back August 1st. So, it just, once the fourth comes, it goes by very fast. So, wanted to thank Mr. Fauzone as well, too. I do look forward to the capital improvement update, and I often have told folks who are outside of our division how wonderful our buildings are, and thank our funding partners for, for supporting those. We do a really good job. And then, just wanted to echo again that while Bright Beginnings is growing, that that is not, that's not what's driving our currently already overpopulated elementary schools. So, even without Bright Beginnings, we were already overcapacity, and it's clear that more children are coming.
Comments?
Just his comment.
Any information?
Oh, yes, and thank, yes, thank, would you like to share that, Mr. Kelly?
Sure. There was Susan's comments earlier asking for data for the NAACP Education Committee, and I'd hope we'd provide those in a sprightly manner.
And they're gonna provide that contact information to the board clerks so that we get it to the right people. You have that contact information. Okay, moving on to upcoming events. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Policy Committee is meeting. The date is not...
August 14th is the next one I have, is that?
Yeah.
Tomorrow. I didn't get any information, and it's not on my calendar. It is not on my... I don't have any policies.
We were gonna do the SOP.
Oh, okay, so that's the only one? But it's not on my calendar.
Like, we should cancel.
You want to cancel? I can't, I mean, I have another meeting.
So, we will reschedule that.
Yeah, so, so August 14th is the next one, right? Up my head.
And that's all we have for upcoming events, upcoming meetings. The next closed session, closed session is August 6th, 6 o'clock at the annex. And then, and then the work, followed by work session at 6:30, also in the annex. And then, the next meeting is August 20th, closed session in Stryker at 6:00 PM, followed by a regular meeting at 6:30, also in Stryker. With regard to upcoming agenda items, the next meeting will discuss the budget calendar and the June financials and year-end spending, as well as the item that we moved tonight, item 6.6, student fees. And will also be a conversation about authorization, the annual authorization to allow the city and the county to use our school buses. And so, unless there are additional comments, this meeting is adjourned.